Thank you for attending tonight's meeting at the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, WCSOH.org. Click on the district link and select Board of Education, then Board Doc's Agenda, and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01, these first set of public comments relative to Agenda Items 9.01 through 11.04. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 1201. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Ms. Hendricks, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd. Ms. Cotter.
Here.
Mrs. Davidson.
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda Item 3.01 is the Oath of Office. There are three board members who are slated to take the oath of office this day, and I think we, the three of us, will stand up front. Laura will join us there, because we want a photo opportunity currently.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Tracy Velardo. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as board member in and for the said Westerville City School District, Franklin and Delaware Counties, Ohio, to the best of my ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted, to my continuance in said office until my successor is chosen and qualified. If so, say I do.
I do.
And I know I, we try not to speak for each other, but I know that I speak for all of us, that it is continuing quite an honor to be allowed to do this. I was just disappointed there wasn't the sickness and health till death do us part. Sorry. Agenda Item 4.01, nominations for office of the President. I would like to open the floor to nominations for office of the President, Board of Education, year 2018.
I would like to nominate Jerry Cotter for the President for 2018.
Thank you. Is there any objection to closing nominations for the office of President? Hearing none, nominations are closed. Treasurer, would you please call the roll for Jerry Cotter for office of President, Board of Education, 2018?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, at this time, I would like to move on to the next agenda item, 4.04, nominations for the office of Vice President. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Ms. Tracy Davidson.
Are there any objections to closing the nominations for office of Vice President? Hearing none, nominations are closed. If you could please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
You too.
Moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, the minutes for the regular meeting held on December 11, Are there any questions or objections to those minutes as presented? No? Okay, we don't need to vote on those. Moving on to Agenda Item 6.01, I think that's with our superintendent, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mrs. Cotter, and welcome to the podium in Gavel. It's going to be a great year, and we look forward to working with you and Ms. Davidson this year as our board leadership. Thank you to Nancy and Rick for your outstanding leadership this last year, and welcome back to our three board members who got themselves elected back on the board. It's going to be exciting 2018 for us, and I look forward to it. As you may or may not know, January is Designated School Board Recognition Month, and so on behalf of the school district, its community, its staff, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize our school board with the following proclamation. Whereas it shall be the mission of the Westerville City School District to provide all students with the best possible education, and whereas the school board sets the direction for our community's public schools by envisioning the community's education future, and whereas the school board sets policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operation, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress toward the school district's goals, and maintains a two-way communications loop with all segments of the community, and whereas serving on a school board requires an unselfish devotion of time and service to carry on the mission and business of the school district, and whereas the school board must respond on behalf of the community to the educational needs of the students, and whereas the school board voluntarily accepts the above-mentioned responsibilities, now therefore be resolved that I, John R. Kellogg, do hereby proclaim January 2018 as School Board Recognition Month in Westerville. Encourage all citizens to publicly and privately thank the school board members from all school districts serving this community and for their dedicated service to our children. Thank you to all of our school board members. We have certificates for you to take home this evening as parting gifts. And just as a personal note, it has been a real treat working with you all. As you know, this is my first superintendency. This is my fifth year in it. You have no idea what it is when you step into the seat, and through your guidance and your leadership, I have learned a lot about what it means to serve a community and serve in my role as our school district superintendent. When I look in the rearview mirror of what we've accomplished together with all of the members of our community, it really brings me great satisfaction professionally and personally, and I really am looking forward to a gigantic 2018 and beyond. So, thank you for your support and leadership over the last several years.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kellogg. Okay, Agenda Item 7.01, I believe that that is going to be a presentation from our superintendent as well.
Again, good evening to the board. Wanted to take a quick few minutes as we head into January to recap our discussion from December when we look at the facilities plan that came to us from the community members. We had a large discussion about next steps in terms of community engagement, and a lot of moving parts in that discussion. I remember a poignant point where someone said, "Do you got it all?" And I said, "I think I do." So this is my efforts to try and put it in front of you, give you an opportunity to ask us questions, make sure we've got it all right before we move forward, because as you know, the pace of what we're trying to do is rather quick in trying to meet some deadlines that we'd like to meet. So I want to make sure we're doing it well, doing it with your vision in place, and making sure the community understands what we have. Before I begin, I want to thank all the members of my team who all put this together, and particularly Greg V. Brants and his group. They did an outstanding job of getting this set to go. So I would say our toes on the starting line. Based on what happens tonight, the gun will go off and off will go. If we need to make some tweaks, we can do that before we hit the ground running. But as it stands, we're slated to begin, actually, we've kind of begun with a couple events, but we're slated to begin this month with our community involvement piece. So here we go. Hopefully. Yes, indeed. It is on. You got that part right. I wonder if the battery's on? These are 2017 batteries, and it's 2018. Yep, go ahead. So in general, it's just, and it's larger conversation just facilities, but we know the evolution of public schools, where we need to be, how we need to teach kids, and all that needs to change. Next slide. The goals of our community engagement process, as we've outlined them, would be to have a process in place, to allow the community to take a look at the recommendations that came to you in December of 2017, and to get that input and analyze it in a way that we can consider if any revisions, changes in those recommendations need to be considered by this board before we move forward at all. And that includes scope of projects and a number of other pieces as well. So really, two things. We want to make sure a lot of community members get a chance to look at the plans and comment on it, and then we want to analyze those comments, that input, in a way that the board can use it to move forward with any recommendations. We've broken this really into two phases with the end date targeted for June 11th for the board to look at all of the final stuff and make decisions about where they want to go to next. This lines up well for the summertime and next fall, trying to fit this in amongst the various other components of the year-end and give time for enough community involvement. I would suspect that some board members would prefer to date a little bit earlier than that, but I think as we look at the timeframe, in order to really give a chance for the board, for the community to get involved and for us to analyze the information correctly, this seems to be a logical endpoint for us. We've already put some things in place for this first phase. We have seven, there's actually eight up there, but seven public meetings scheduled. These are scheduled at a variety of sites. The sites have nothing to do with plans. They just have to be sites around the district that were available on those dates and those times. We've tried to vary the times and places along the way, so you'll see, for example, on January 27th, we have one for scheduled on a Saturday morning. We have one in the mid-afternoon here at the ELC on February 1st, and then several evening opportunities. So we're trying to have a variety of times, a variety of places around the district where anyone from the community, regardless of the site, regardless of the person, can come on in, hear a little bit about the recommendations, and learn how they can provide input. The other one that's up there, you'll see the first one on there, which is actually the first day will really open up things, is we have a meeting with English-language learner parents here. They've invited me to come present at that one. Tomorrow morning, actually, tomorrow afternoon, at the Westerville Chamber of Commerce Government and Relationships Committee meeting that I'm on, I'll be presenting to that group tomorrow. So already, groups are starting to call us and ask us about coming to present. And so we have these meetings set that are open to anyone. We'll advertise those, make sure it goes out to everybody, and the flip side of that is any group that wants us to come to them, we're open and available to that, and I'll talk about the communication means. So right already for the first phase, ending in February, so we have turnaround time for the data for early March for the board to look at it before we begin the second phase. So this is first round. Next slide. Outreach, so we're building a database and reaching out to all of our booster groups and PTAs, letting them know about the dates we have already set up, and letting them know if they want us to come to one of their events, we're happy to do that. The practical matter is almost all these groups meet once a month, including the community groups like Rotary or any of the other groups. Most of these groups meet once a month, and so the practicality of getting on their agenda in these next two months is pretty short-lived. We will take any invitation and go with it, meet with anybody who wants to, but these groups will get specific emails as we have their email information, letting them know about what's going on. We'll also do a lot of advertising, general public, press releases, any current email addresses we have with our own community members using social media. And then the website that we're building out will have all the detailed information. So if someone doesn't get to come to an event or hear a presentation, all the information that's contained in those presentations will be on our website for people to drill down and take a look at the details that they might have, and review that information before they engage with us online. The other thing that we'll get is we're going to be using an online platform, I'll mention here in a minute. That'll give us some measure of community involvement as we analyze the data, so we'll be able to do two things. One is, what is the community saying, and what's the participation from the community in these various constituencies as we collect that information? When you have a short timeframe, sometimes that's the best way to go. So we'll be doing a lot of outreach. Collection of the community thoughts, we're using an online platform called Thought Exchange that allows community members to comment openly. It's not a polling situation where they're voting yes, no. It's a place to write comments. There's probably some limitations in how many, how much, how long, lengthy a comment, but there's no limitation to how many comments. There's no limitations to who can do that. So they'll be able to provide open-ended comments and some open-ended questions that we'll develop in response to the plan. We'll send that access directly to anybody we have an email for. The advertising is a way for people who are interested in participating who we don't have an email for to go to the link online and register themselves. By registering the means, you'll participate all the way through the process, which will include adding your comments based on what you want to say based on the plan, and then later being able to analyze the comments of other people and start to weigh in on which thoughts you like and which thoughts you think have value.
So as you comment, as someone from the community comments, you can tell who that is, the community member?
No.
No, so it's anonymous.
No. What will happen is initially, there'll be initial phase of offering comments. That data will be organized, much like we would do in a regular group meeting, right? Sticky notes where you organize thematically. So the data from the comments coming in from the community will get organized thematically into a long list. You can drill down and see the individual comments associated, not the person who made it. And so from that, the community members will be able to go back and say, "You know, this general theme weighs heavy for me. I'm going to give it a lot of stars." So the weighting of that, just like you've done in group meetings with sticky notes and chart paper, but just on a larger scale. So no, there won't be identification amongst the members about who's saying what at all. So there's a link, we'll provide a link. We'll also have email. They can log in and participate. It's not a survey. It's really, as that last bullet says, "Place to write your thoughts, view the thoughts of other community members, and indicate your level of agreement. I really agree with this statement. I don't really agree with this one." And that gives us a weighting of this. So the big piece of this, logically, like any meeting we have, right? Whether it's a virtual meeting, this might be catalog virtual or a real meeting, is getting people there, getting people to participate, and that comes from advertising and pushing out to people. So that'll be a big part of what we're trying to do. Staff involvement, we've already set up and begun staff chats. I already met with the staff at South the first day back. I'm at HMB tomorrow morning, so I'm scheduled right on through the next couple, by the end of February, we'll have done staff chats, which is meant to include anybody on staff at every one of the buildings to present them information about what's in the recommendations, allow them the opportunity to ask questions, and then what they're going to get is the same thing, an opportunity to participate online through Thought Exchange to provide their thoughts, so they'll be part of that community. We've also started scheduling meetings with representative staff members at those buildings that are targeted for renovations, as we talked about, as you've asked for. So those meetings are being put together and organized through Scott Dorn, Jeff LaRose, and that team. And that includes meeting with students. In fact, if it had not been for the weather today, we would have had a meeting with students at South today to talk about the facilities at South. So those are being scheduled as well for us to gather information from those staff members and those students at those targeted buildings to get feedback and how that building impacts teaching and learning there today. Our goal is for this first phase that you've seen up there, to have that first phase done and to present the first phase results to the board in early April. That's a pretty aggressive timeline, so January, February, March, compile the information, get it all turned around, spring break's in there. Turn around, and when we get back from spring break, we anticipate being able to sit down with the board, take a look at what the community's saying, how does that impact the plan, and what does that mean for a second wave of community involvement after that to drill down even further or test drive some of the thinking that we see at that point. I think that's the last slide.
Questions, comments, things we missed?
Does anyone have any comments, questions?
I don't have any particular questions, John. I really appreciate the amount of time you've spent putting this together and the way you listened to all of our thoughts and ideas about how this should happen. I'm very interested in seeing how the online platform works for us. I'm excited about that. There is a lot of buzz in the community, and over the holidays out and about, I heard a lot from community members, and I want to reassure everyone that indeed, the online platform information matters a great deal to us, and we intend very much so to take into account what is said and to weigh that and to think about what's going on. It's important work that we're about. It doesn't feel like a short timeframe to people in the community, but it actually is a very short timeframe for the amount of engagement that we are embarking on. This is an extraordinarily important part of whatever the board ends up doing as regards facilities, and the input from the community will be a huge component in our thinking about how we progress. So I want to reassure people, and I want to thank you for the amount of time and effort you and your team have put into this thus far.
To that point, and Greg, correct me if I'm, get this wrong, the database we're using, product we're using, Thought Exchange, will allow us to turn the data outward and be transparent to the community about what that is. So it won't be that we have it, we see it, and nobody else does. We'll be able to push that back out through the website on that page and say, "Okay, here's the results, community, of what you said." So we'll be able to analyze by what they said, and be able to analyze by participation by a variety of groups, as long as people are willing to go online. And we'll deal with those that would like to provide comment but are not interested in going online. We'll work around that one. That's not a hard problem to work around.
Me next. I was just going to say, I really, I'm impressed that the community meeting schedule, the times and the dates and the various locations, I think that will appeal to everyone. I appreciate that. And as far as the online component, my thought was it would be neat to figure out if we could somehow find a way if the kids were doing some of that, you know, giving us feedback.
Anybody who has an email address that we have, we're able to send to. So we can work through that as well. If we want to use, for example, there's probably some age groups that may not be as helpful in terms of feedback.
Sure.
But we can have a discussion about how far down to drill and who we want to send that to. I would add the same vision for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's more of an affirmation. I really appreciate you bringing out, trying to impress upon community members that don't feel that the online piece is anything lesser than if you can't go to one of these meetings or we're not a part of a, not a part of a group that we're, that's really, I love the emphasis of that, and however we advertise that and market that, that's awesome. You were going through it, and I wrote student groups, and you covered that, and I suspected student advisory today was probably going to be something.
I knew what it was.
Yes, yeah, yeah. How to say this? I do recognize this is a pretty aggressive schedule. I'm, I'm trying to not, I'm working with an organization now in which we're doing community engagement because we're going to raise, we're going to try to raise nearly $10 million for this organization, blah. The only reason I'm saying that is we're going through a lot of this, and we're going to take five to six months.
Yeah.
And so now, we, meaning schools, we're actually a little farther ahead than what I am doing with this thing over here. I just wanted to acknowledge that that's a good schedule. I think it is aggressive. I think it's doable, but I think it's aggressive. Really, I'm looking forward to April and just really praying, hoping that we get into all these organizations and they give us great feedback, and so really, I'm just like affirming, this is really good. You have listed wonderful organizations, don't you think, to already, 10 or nine, and already? So I'm hopeful that I'll be able to make a couple of those and just kind of sit and observe. So thank you. I know you guys, I know this floor has really done a lot over these last few weeks to get us to this place. So thanks.
And I just want to be clear that the community meetings are not a have-to-do-that-to-do everything else. Community meetings are meant to be a place for people to come here, ask questions, and consider before they respond. People who can't do that, that's the website. Because, you know, anybody who's going to participate, I know wants to participate with full understanding, a good understanding of the project. So all that information will be there for them, and like I said, regardless of the meetings, if someone or some group wants more conversation, we will free ourselves up and make sure we do that.
So I just wanted to add my thanks. I'm glad to see that we're already gathering feedback from staff, and then I know you attempted for students today, the snow got in the way, or ice. I appreciate that. I do think that this is going to be a really good opportunity, and I don't know if I missed it, but when will the online component be available? When can we look for that?
I think our open date is January 24th, isn't it, Greg? So it's kind of coincides with that first community meeting, so yeah, thank you for asking that. So January 24th, we intend to have that spot up live. And it won't be a lot of questions. It's probably going to be three questions, three broad-stroke questions, with really an open-ended opportunity to say, "This is what I like, this is what I don't like, I don't understand this."
Okay. I'm really excited about it. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 8.01. I see that we do not have anyone signed up for public comments, so we will go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. Agenda Item 9.01, resolution to approve requests from Treasurer. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Laura?
Okay, the next three items on the agenda are just our annual items that we do every year. I'll just kind of give a brief synopsis, if you have any other questions I can answer. So basically, the first one is just permitting the Treasurer to purchase services, pay bills and salaries when due, transfer outstanding state-dated checks to the General Fund, execute contracts, advance funds to the General Fund if needed, invest interim and active funds, sign payroll checks, regular checks, purchase orders, request amended certificates, estimate resources with the county if needed, request and execute on behalf of the board all advances of taxes and funds as they're available, tax abatement notification, just that we have to let the counties know to notify us and our attorneys when those things happen for Board of Revisions, and then just that we dispense with reading of the minutes at the board meetings.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
No.
Could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Item 9.02, resolution to participate in state and federal-funded programs for fiscal year 2018. If I could have a motion in a second to consider those?
So moved. Second.
Okay, these are just our approval of our federal funds and our state funds on the annual, or the monthly financials that you get, our 400 funds, our state funds, 500 are our federal funds, and then OS6 is our National School Lunch Program. For the most part, these are funds that we get every year. There are some that come on and off. The one, number five, Straight A Fund, is wrapping up. The state did away with that program, so we're just spending down a little bit of funds we had left over from last year, but then that one will disappear. We did pick up a new miscellaneous state-federal fund that they gave this year. So for the most part, the idea B, the special ed, the Title I funds, we get every year. A few come on and off, so that's what those are.
Are there any questions or comments? Laura, could you please call a roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 9.03, resolution to approve Board of Education participation. If I could have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, these are just a few groups that we participate with and work together with throughout the year. and work together with throughout the year, and they have some annual fees. So we're just going to, the first one is the Ohio School Board Legal Assistance Fund for $250. Westerville Chamber of Commerce, $1,125. And then the Ohio School Boards Association, annual dues are $7,669.
Any questions or comments? Could you please call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 10.01 and 10.02. I don't know if there's someone giving a presentation on this. Dr. Kellogg, is that you?
I can stunt-drive for Ms. Lofton tonight. So there's really only one item under 10.01, which is a resignation for Gary Henkel as substitute administrator for food services, followed by Item 10.02, which is hiring Mr. Henkel as assistant manager of food service. As you know, this is under that Gary retired from here, and we're bringing him back under retire, rehire, under these two action items.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
Just thanks to Gary for coming back.
Can I have a, did I do a motion? Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve the Agenda Items 10.01 and 10.02?
We're voting on it together, asking for a motion together?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes. Okay, moving on in the agenda to Item Number 11.01, Appoint the Board Designee as Public Records Official. Can I have a motion in a second on this?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have anyone in mind? Should we have discussion?
Recommended.
Okay, let me see. Okay. Okay. I would like to suggest we consider appointing the treasurer. Or can I amend the motion? Yes, I'll amend the motion to consider appointing the treasurer as our board designee.
So moved.
There's, thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.02. I would like a motion in a second to approve the... Oh, okay. Excuse me. Can we vote on the amended motion, too?
Okay, Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes. And just to clarify, that was for the board designee for public records official? So now moving on to Agenda Item 11.02. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the 2018 Board of Education Meeting Calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
We're just messing.
No, they're teasing you.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 11.03, Resolution to Appoint Legal Counsel for the Board of Education. And it looks like the board is considering Brickard Eckler and Rich and Gillis Law Group. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Can you please call the roll?
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.04, Overnight Field Trips. Looks like we just have one. North Wrestlers going to Centerville Wrestling Tournament in Dayton. Very exciting. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12.01, Public Comment. We do have somebody signed up. Okay, we have Ms. Peg Duffy, if you'd like to come forward.
I would just say, if you have never taken the public records training, do it. It's fascinating and it's worth it. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I viewed it twice. Twice, I sat through it. I saw a thorough analysis presented by the Facilities Committee. That's a committee comprised of a broad representation of our community. That was great. But a great opportunity was missed with it being a superintendent's committee rather than one of the board. A board committee would have opened opportunity for the public observation of discussion and perhaps could have headed off what, in board discussion at the end of last meeting, seemed to be a sticking point. Now, according to the superintendent's report tonight, there will be further delay in moving on in addressing what the Facilities Committee has identified as critical needs. No community opinions were sought under the original capital improvement that funded the Academic Enrichment Center and the extensive East Wind Projects. Then voters made the capital improvement permanent. Most of you were on the board when Point View contracted under that was undertaken. No thumbs up sought from the general community on that. So I guess what I want to know is, why doesn't the South undertaking fit into the same pattern with board approval on urgency? Urgency substantiated by more than just the committee member's walkthrough of the facility. If you are concerned about community acceptance of the middle school and elementary new construction, maybe develop and present the rationale that you would be using if a bond issue approval involved. Now, we know we don't have that. Show us how you will address the need for more effective programming at the middle school level. Don't let prioritizing projects or contentious debate over particular buildings thwart moving forward now on what the committee has identified as critical projects. All I say is, how far down the road are we going to kick the can until the tin wears thin?
Thank you very much. So moving on in the agenda, Item 13.01, Board Comments. Does anyone have any comments this evening? Okay. I would just like to say that I've enjoyed working with all the members of the board here and of course, the administration, Dr. Kellogg. And I'm really looking forward to this year. And I appreciate your confidence in me. So thank you all. And I'm of course looking forward to working with Mrs. Davidson, too. Okay, moving on to 14.01. Our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, January 22nd, 2018, at 6:00 PM here at the Early Learning Center. Then, almost our final item of the evening, 15.01. I would like a motion in a second to move into executive session for the purpose of consideration of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee, student, or school official, or to investigate charges, complaints against any such person. Also, for the purpose of conferences, was the attorney involving pending or imminent court action? I'd, motion in a second, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I would also like to point out that we will not be doing any additional business after the executive session this evening, so we will adjourn after that. So in case anyone was considering staying. Okay, can you please call the roll?
We're going to executive session, that's the role for that.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.